Hey folks, hey, welcome. This is Gun Sports Radio down here at the Delmar Gun Show. Thanks to San Diego County Gun Owners. If you haven't joined up, you really need to. Ten bucks a month, or if you want to go with a ten ring, $1,000 for the year. And I'm telling you, the benefits are endless. You really need to check these guys out. Also, Hot Rods and Custom Stuff, 2324 Auto Park, Buenos Aires, Escondido, and High Seas Trading Company, if you want to grab one of those cool shirts that I have. All right. Hey, Mike, who you got for our guest this hour?
Well, we're down at the gun show. We're in Delmar, back where the gun show belongs. As you know, they, Crossroads West sued, and they put an injunction. They banned the gun ban. They still have to go through the court process, but we're down here today, and then they're going to be back in December as well. And we're running into some very cool people who came down to celebrate and have fun and buy some ammo. And Mike Diaz from Chula Vista, city council member.
Hello, Mike.
How are you doing, man?
I'm doing fine.
How you doing, Mike? Yeah, I used to work on the mile of cars.
Oh, really?
For many years, yeah.
Well, that's National City.
I know, but you're right down the street. You're just down the street.
But we want the tax dollars in Chula Vista.
Doggone right. Doggone right.
And Mike's a, you're a frequent guest on, at the gun show here. I see you just about every time.
Yep, I try to get out here as much as I can. You can find some great deals and, you know, I mean, today I'm...
Because you're not just, I mean, you're not just a guy who likes the Second Amendment and you happen to be in office. You're a shooter. You're a guy who actually owns guns. You go to the range. I think, weren't you on South Bay's board for a while, South Bay Rod and Gun?
Yes, I was on the board for a couple of years. I ran their Women on Target program. I'm a certified NRA instructor. I think I've earned a couple of stripes.
Yeah, man, Mike walks it and talks it.
Yeah, no kidding.
Guns are a lot more fun if you shoot them actually.
Yeah, that's true. So how's the battle down at Chula Vista?
Well, you know, I mean, the question is, how's the battle in California? And so there's just a lot of little battles going on. And I think what needs to happen is we need to get folks elected that are Second Amendment friendly. And Mike and his organization is doing exactly that. And they helped my campaign, and they made a difference. And we all need to get, we all need to be part of that process.
And we'll talk to both sides. We'll talk, how many Democrats have you lined up?
Well, we're actually working on, we're working on, I don't know if you're a member, you got the email, but we're actually looking for Democrats who are, I learned a new term, Mike, blue steel Democrats. You know, you have like, you have blue dog Democrats, and they're fiscally conservative, I guess. Well, blue steel Democrats are pro-Second Amendment Democrats. And I've gotten a request from some of the leadership in the Democratic Party locally to, they want to start a group called the Blue Steel Democrats and have a pro-Second Amendment influence.
Why not?
So I've put it out there, and we got a lot of really good response.
Yeah, I know when I walked in this morning, the first thing I told you is, hey, I saw your email on the blue steel.
Yeah.
And that is a, it's a great idea. And that's what we need to do, I think.
I did get, I get a fair amount of feedback from that. People who said, you know what, I want to make sure, or I'm a little worried about it. I want to make sure that you're not splitting the group up. And that's not the intention at all. The intention is to help give pro-Second Amendment Democrats, you know, strengthen numbers. Help kind of give them strength to, you know, come out of the, not come out of the closet, come out of the safe, come out of the gun safe.
Yeah, that makes sense, too, because, I mean, the guns are an American thing. The Second Amendment's an American thing. It should not be a Republican-Democrat thing. Democrats own guns.
Yeah.
These bad laws impact them just as badly as they impact everybody else.
Well, I kind of feel sorry in a way for a Democrat that's a Second Amendment gun owner, because he or she is up against a massive wall.
Well, yeah, Mike or Mike, how does that work exactly? Because if you get someone who is a Democratic politician, and they say, no, I'm pro-Second Amendment, that kind of puts them against their party. How do they work that out?
You know, I don't know. I mean, let's bring up a resolution that came before this Chula Vista City Council. We had a resolution, and you know what? There was two folks that voted to turn that resolution down, which was not a gun-friendly resolution, and it just happened to be one Republican.
Yep.
You're talking to right now, and a Democrat. And so, to me, that's what really speaks loudly to exactly what you want to do, Mike. And I think it's, I think it's going to work. I think it's a great idea. And once we find things in common, we all like to just tip a jar or a glass of beer on a drink, right? And that's what starts the conversation. And I think that's what we need to do. It's not, we're going to have two silos.
Sure.
We just need to bring people in, and this is how we do it.
Well, Mike, that resolution, I don't, you know, it's kind of an elephant in the room. That resolution, you voted against it. It was clearly a gun ban resolution. They actually said, hey, we want to reinstate the assault weapons ban, assault weapons, quote unquote. Those are guns. It was a gun ban. It asked to reinstate nationally a ban, or I'm sorry, start for the first time, a ban on magazines that hold more than 10. This was an anti-gun, clear as day, resolution. You voted against it. Jill Galvez voted against it. But then, Chula Vista Councilmember John McCann said he was against it, said he was going to vote against it, and he voted for it.
Yeah.
To the shock and amaze of everybody, voted for it. Do you have any idea?
I don't know.
Does it really make a difference? He voted the wrong way.
Right.
It doesn't really make a difference why he did it.
You're right. And so, but it is. It is what it is. I mean, it's sitting in that council meeting, and as Councilmember Galvez started talking about how she could not support it, I was going, wow, I can count to three right now, and right? And as a councilwoman, I have no power until I can count to three. And we had, it was clear to me that we had three votes at that time. So that's where, you know...
But then John voted for it. He voted for the anti-gun. Do we have any idea, like, what happened? Do you have any insight there?
I haven't had a chance to talk to him. You know, I'm at City Hall every day. He works. So we get together, you know, very, very, not very often, and so, but we'll certainly have that discussion sometime.
He may not want to come in every day.
Yeah.
Because he knows he's going to run into you.
Yeah. But again, and that's why this blue steel program, I think, is so important. Because sometimes, maybe you don't know who is going to support a bill. And you're right, Mike, this was clearly a bill designed to strip away our Second Amendment. And in that council meeting, you know, and I got to say, even though the mayor and I do not see eye to eye on a lot of things, a lot of things, I got to give her credit that she typically gives everybody the same amount of respect at city council meetings. And so what I told her is like, you know, I can't believe that we didn't work together on this. I mean, our council works together very, very well in spite of our differences. We respect everybody's opinions and positions, and this is one where we could have shown the country, the county, the area, the region, how a Democrat and Republican get together and put something, a common sense piece of resolution together. So I'm a little upset that we didn't do that. We had an opportunity, and we missed it.
Well, I'm sure there's more coming.
There are. And I was going to say, coming down the pike is going to be most likely, I don't even know if they've talked to you yet, but it looks like the gun storage law that passed in San Diego, where basically, inside your house, unless you're touching your gun, it has to be, you know, inoperable or locked away. I'm pretty sure that's coming to Chula Vista. Have you heard anything about that?
I have not. I have not heard that. But we'll, you know what? When that comes, we'll deal with it, and hopefully we'll be able to muster up some votes to oppose it. No, the reality is, there's only two Republicans on that city council, so sometimes when we have issues like this.
Oh, wow.
You know, it's hard to count to three, but we, we'll see. I mean, you know, we'll see what happens. Politics is kind of where it's at.
Well, you just have to explain it to them in a way, Democrat or Republican, that they realize, okay, what you're saying makes perfectly good sense. I mean, I know, that's kind of a Pollyanna attitude, but really, I mean, because we've got to figure out a way to convince the people that are anti why it's not. Or if anything, tell me why you're not for it.
Yeah.
And most of them can't explain it to you.
You know, it's, you know, the problem right now in politics is, we've all, we're all in our little silos. And no time will somebody's idea from another silo be allowed to come in to theirs. And that's the problem. And that's why the San Diego County Gun Owners Association is so, so important, you know, right? We need to get out there. We need to be advocates for Second Amendment rights.
Right.
And that strong advocacy that we get right here in San Diego County, hopefully will then push, because what do most politicians want, more than anything else?
Money.
Re-elected. You want to get re-elected, right?
I was going to say, re-elected, too.
And so that's where we can make the difference. Not only electing those kind of folks, but also making sure that we re-elect the folks with good background.
And that's you. We got to make sure you get a re-elected. You're coming up for election here in 2020.
Yes, let me get this out. Mike Diaz, the number four, citycouncil.org. See my webpage. I need the support.
Yeah. Well, you got it from San Diego County Gun Owners. You got it from Gun Sports Radio.
Right.
We'll do whatever you can. Don't ever feel like you're a pest. You can bug us. We're moving out to two hours in November, because we just, one hour isn't enough to fight the fight. We've got to, and we've got to help you and all the rest of the Second Amendment folks out there that, and like, that's what I like about San Diego County Gun Owners. They'll stand up toe to toe and explain it to you till the cows come in. No anger, no upset, just explain it to you black and white. That's what I like this guy.
Absolutely.
All right, we're going to take a quick break. We're down here at the Gun Sports, well, this is Gun Sports Radio. We're down here at the Delmar Gun Show. We're having more fun than you can imagine. This is FM 96.1, AM 1170.
The Answer.
This is Gun Sports Radio. We're down here at the Delmar Gun Show. Thanks to San Diego County Gun Owners. And the website again is?
That's SanDiegoCountyGunOwners.com, or SDCGO.org.
And it's only $10 a month.
$10 a month, less than a box of ammo.
What do they get?
You get a lapel pin, you get a, we're working on electronic membership cards, so you can have an app on your phone. You get, we're giving away stickers and glasses, but mostly what you get is you get peace of mind that you are moving the ball forward when it comes to Second Amendment issues.
And you're having a big barbecue.
Having a big barbecue. Our members only barbecue's coming up October 19th.
What day is that?
That's a Sunday.
Okay.
And that's in Escondido, and we're taking over a private range.
Ah.
And we're going to have a lot of fun.
Who's your little friend?
This is little Emmy. She's Wendy's little daughter.
She is. We're keeping her.
We're pretty much best friends.
Did you tell Wendy we're keeping her?
Yeah.
Yeah, she's our new mascot.
Yeah, she's pretty much, we're best friends. We hang out a lot.
She's a sweetie.
But that's not our special guest. We have an important...
Yeah, we have one with Express Auto Service. They work on all my cars. Go to expressautoservice@lamazza.com. Tell you what, folks, if they can fix my cars, they can fix your cars, too. All right, who you got?
Okay, so our special guest is Lee D'Amio. I know a lot of people probably pronounce it wrong because of another prominent politician and, did I say it right?
I'll take D'Amio, but it is D'Amio.
D'Amio.
D'Amio, okay. And what do you do, sir?
Well, sir, I'm, right now, I got a couple of hats. I'm here today, I'm with the California Constitutional Rights Foundation. That is a new organization that's just been formed. Stephen Bailey, who ran for Attorney General, Gary Creep, and two other great lawyers are involved with this. And we are going to take it to, we're going to be providing free legal services for people whose constitutional rights in California have been violated. We're going to take First Amendment cases, Second Amendment cases, religious freedom cases, anything there is. And that's where I'm here. We're promoting our group. We're trying to, I'm following Mike's example, a great example of building an organization. And we're looking for monthly sponsorships just like them, donors, et cetera. But we're excited about this. We'd like to, we'd really like to really hammer this and then become really effective. We've already filed one lawsuit with a school board up north on a voting rights issue that we're dealing with. Then we've also got a couple of, we've joined a couple of amicus briefs already in the Supreme Court. One of them is the Remington case, which if you're familiar with, that's the one where Remington is being sued as, at the manufacturer of the guns being sued based on a shooting. And we're defending that with amicus brief. And we also just joined the case against the, that's going to the Supreme Court on the magazine ban.
Nice.
For California. We just filed that one about three days ago.
Good.
So we're getting on it. We're going to take care of people's rights. That's what I'm doing here today. I've been a member of San Diego County Gun Owners, a great fan of this organization, really, really special. And looking forward to the barbecue again.
Yeah.
If you're a member, you got to go to the barbecue. It's one of the most fun things you'll ever do, so.
And what's the other hat that we, that some of our members know you from?
Yeah, that would be, I'm one of the, I'm the first school board candidate that was endorsed by the San Diego County Gun Owners. I'm a member of the Fallbrook High School Board.
Gotcha.
And we're up there, and you know, we're constantly dealing with stuff up there and I'm trying to...
Just like us down here?
Yep, yep. Just speaking up for, you know, I'm trying to do the right thing on the school board, take care of the kids, and you've done a great job.
That's number one. It's probably tough, because you've got a lot of opposition.
Well, what, you know, we have different, we have a new board, there's from, and there's different philosophies now, whereas opposed to, I like to go from conservative principles and stand up, and you know, stand up even for Second Amendment rights and what we're doing.
Sure.
We had a little bit of that, we had to deal with, too, so.
Well, we thank you for your hard work. I know it's not easy. And if you think you can follow this guy, let me know. I want to see how that works out.
Well, he's been a great example to me, and I just...
A good mentor, too.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Wow, I don't know about that. Come on, you've tripped over everything, you've stumbled everything, right?
No, Lee's way, way, way ahead of me as far as activism and what he does. He's on the Central Committee.
Yeah.
He's been elected to office. Guy's fantastic. So I kind of want, I want to bring, I didn't tell you I was going to bring this up. I'm kind of putting you on the spot, but there, I wanted to talk to you about one of the issues that's happening in Fallbrook, because I know it's something you've been supportive of. There's a local gun shop in Fallbrook that's, you know, they're doing raffles to raise money for some of the local sports teams, and they're getting some flack from some of the, from some of the employees at the school. And I don't want to go into specifics on who, because I don't think we need to escalate it quite yet. But what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I've, you know, it's been something that we've been dealing with for the last couple of weeks now. I've been meeting with Matt Beebe from Beebe's, Beebe's Family, Bebe's Firearms. And the Beebe family is just fantastic. They're interested, even more than the Second Amendment issues here, they're interested in really supporting the kids in our, in our, in our community. So they've done gun raffles for different booster groups of different sports, and I'm just trying to be behind them as best I can to get, to make sure that that happens, that we, you know, that when they, when they contribute like that, you know, we're accepting it and we're going there. So there's, there's been some issue. We're working through it with Beebe's. There's not much I can talk about it, because there's a lot of stuff behind the scenes I can't.
Right, 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 right. But I know you've been real supportive. So Beebe's is a mom and pop shop, literally a mom and pop shop.
Truly.
Owned by, you know, a mom and a pop.
Yes.
And they are, you know, really, the community is important to them.
Absolutely.
So it's not like they're trying to make some big stance or stand or whatever. They want to help kids.
Right.
So some of these sports teams are underfunded. They're looking for jerseys. So Beebe's is donating, and they're actually getting other people to do like, you know, drawings and that sort of thing. They're donating, they're getting thousands of dollars.
Thousands of dollars.
Thousands of dollars raised.
Yes.
And for, you know, I think a lot of people, even folks that agree with us on Second Amendment issues, kind of give us the whole like, well, Mike, gee, you got to understand guns and kid, blah, blah. That's not okay anymore. You know, these are good people doing good things, and I really appreciate you standing up for them, Lee.
Yeah, and my personal stand, and again, I'm not speaking for the high school, and I am not speaking for the board. I have to say that.
Right, I know.
But my stand is, hey, we have a Second Amendment. Beebe's Family Arms is a legitimate business in Fallbrook. They're a, they're a longtime Fallbrook family, too.
Yeah, yeah.
And so we should be able to stand up with, and accept donations from them for our kids.
Absolutely.
And because, you know, and I think that's something that we need to also, I personally feel, we need to model for our kids, because we're standing up and allowing that and not saying that, hey, we can't do this because there's a gun shop or whatever it is. And I understand the school shooting issues, et cetera. Nobody's stronger than me when it comes to trying to set up protection systems in our school.
Sure.
Than me.
Right.
When it comes to that, because I understand it. But Second Amendment is in our Constitution. We need to be teaching our kids the Constitution and the values thereof. There's, I'm a gun owner. My wife and I are. She got me back into it after many years. It's just the best way to go.
Absolutely. Wives are always doing that, aren't they?
They do those kinds of things.
Happy wife, happy life.
My wife, she's wonderful. She's also an elected official. She's on the waterboard there.
Yeah.
But we're, kids need to understand the Constitution. They need to understand their rights.
Yeah.
And that's part of, that's where I'm at in this. And I'm, you know, I'll keep working at it, so.
Amen. That's awesome. So what's, so tell us a little bit, so what's next for the organization? I think you, you're not quite sure if you're going to run for, for school board.
Right. I may not run again this time. I may run again this time, I'm not 100% sure.
I'll be honest with you, Lee. I'm going to try to talk you into running.
Yeah, I think you are.
Call his wife.
Just one more.
Call his wife. She'll get him in there.
So, you know, and I'm, I'm...
He ignored that, you know?
No, I did not.
One, just, just one more. We, I mean, especially with everything that's going on.
I very well may.
Good. What else have you got to do? Come on.
Well, I've, you know, as Mike said, I'm involved in the Central Committee, and I want to do some things there.
So talk about that. So the Central Committee for the Republican Party is?
The Republican Party Central Committee is, as much as that sounds like a strange name, it is. But it is the official name of the elected body of Republicans in San Diego County that voters vote for to elect them to this committee, and that committee's purpose is to raise money, get candidates elected who are Republicans. So we, the Central Committee, is actually the representative of the average Republican out in the street.
Right.
To be able to do that, to endorse candidates, to, you know, right now there's several races. We're looking at different candidates as a committee, who we're going to endorse and who we're going to get behind, et cetera. So that's our job. And I, 10 years ago, 10, hard to say it now, 10 years ago, I, I literally got involved in this. I got, literally got up off the couch. I got mad the night the Democrats pushed Obamacare through the, through. I, when I heard that on the TV, I literally, literally stood up off the couch, turned to my wife and said, that's it, I'm getting involved in the Republican Party, and I'm getting involved in the Tea Party. And I did both right from that minute.
Excellent.
And like Mike says, I've been active ever since.
Well, it's easy to say, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Because that's a service. I mean, because let's face it, you didn't have to get up off the couch.
No, I didn't.
You could have had her make you another sandwich, and you'd have been golden. But nope, you got up off the couch, and that's what's important.
And I did, and that's, you know, in the end, that's got me here with the California Constitutional Rights Foundation. The Constitution is deep, involved in my heart, and I, you know, we've got to teach our kids and stand for it.
Without a doubt.
And we've got to do that. So and I do that at every level. We're on that. We have the county party, all the way up, I'm heavily involved in the state party now. We're getting things done there.
Right.
There's some great movement going on in the Republican Party in the state.
Really? Like what?
Give us some examples.
Well, the biggest example is, I think, I think we're getting some great leadership out of Brian Jones.
Oh, yeah.
And Shannon Grove and Marie Waldron right now.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They've, they've done some things in the past. The legislative bodies, legislative bodies up there have, you know, I want to use the word conspired with the consultants to pour a bunch of money into consultants' pockets, which has not gotten people elected. And they've, they've started to put a stop to that.
Good.
And so there's, there's really good things happening for the first time in many years. And so anyway...
Well, you know, if you push that, that ball up the hill hard enough and long enough, get enough people to help you, it'll get to the top.
We're getting closer. And as long as I'm around, I'm going to keep pushing those, pushing those balls up those hills.
Absolutely.
So I would like to give a, if it's okay, to give a quick plug.
Yeah, 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 go ahead.
The California Constitutional Rights Foundation, we're going to be doing great things, but we need your help. You can go to our website. It is C A C R F dot org. It's a brand new website, so we're just getting it built out, but you can actually donate there. We can, we can do the monthly donations, just like San Diego County Gun Owners will do, as little as five bucks, all the way up to whatever. But we need your help, because, and the help you're going to give us is to protect people's constitutional rights that need it.
You'll be getting an email from me.
That'd be great. That'd be great. And I...
I'm definitely going to take care of you.
I really want to thank you guys and thanks for the opportunity to talk. Mike, you've been the best. Dave, it's nice to meet you.
Yeah, finally, face to face.
Finally, we've talked about it.
Well, when we get out there, I got something for BB when we get out there to help them out.
That'd be great.
All right. So let's take a quick break. You're listening to FM 96.1, AM 1170.
The Answer.
All right, folks. Hey, welcome back. You're listening to Gun Sports Radio down here at the Delmar Gun Show. Thanks to San Diego County Gun Owners. Go to san diego county gun owners dot com. Join. $10 a month. The benefits are endless. Plus, you'll help keep your Second Amendments rights clean and clear. This segment is brought to you by San Diego RV Center. You've got a coach born five years old. Take it down there. Let him check that roof out for you free of charge. Last thing you want is a leaky, leaky roof. That would be the worst thing going. And hey, as you know, lawful AR ownership is increasingly under attack. California's assault weapon laws make it impossible to legally keep your AR rifle with the features it was born with. What's the solution? It's the KALIKEYE. Go to kalykey.com, K-A-L-I-K-E-Y dot com. And for more protection, Firearms Legal Protection, you can get them for 24 hours a day, seven days a week. In the event you get stopped or pulled over, last thing you want to do is go in unprepared. Go to firearmslegal.com, firearmslegal.com. You might get John Dillon, one of our guests. All right, who you got now, boss?
We got, we got a whole panel of people here.
Yeah, we got tons of them.
Which is awesome. Again, we're down to the gun show, Delmar, selling ammo, selling guns, doing all the things that a gun show does. We're very happy to have Crossroads back. So come on down. There's still time.
Yeah.
But we have Poway Weapons and Gear with us here today. We have a booth and we have a couple of people. Introduce yourself.
I'm Mike. I'm one of the weapons instructors over there.
Excellent, Mike. Okay, you're the Mike without the British accent.
Correct, yeah. That'd be me.
All right, excellent.
Hi, my name is Elke. I'm a brand ambassador.
Hi, Elke. What does that mean, a brand ambassador?
So I work all off-premise events for the range.
Oh, cool.
Okay, so you're the front girl. You go out there and...
That's right.
Well, I could, yeah, that would work for me.
Awesome, awesome. We have Alexander. We're going to talk to Xander in a few minutes, but we didn't have enough...
Microphone.
...cans for him, so we'll talk to him in just a couple of minutes.
But we'll let him get to it. So Mike, tell us about your company.
Working at Poway Weapons and Gear, it's been a great pleasure of mine. I was able to transfer some of my training and my skill sets to be at PWG. And it's been a great experience to kind of help out the community and let the people know about weapon safety, the new upcoming things with the CCW. Seeing a lot of people coming out onto our classes was great. So, yeah.
So what is your background? What brought you to Poway?
Um...
Or PWG?
Right. My background is military.
I knew it. I knew it. He did ten push-ups before he came on air.
Yeah. Was in the military for 10 years active.
What branch?
The Navy.
Oh, fantastic. What'd you do for the Navy?
I was a gunner's mate.
Oh, wow, very cool.
Yeah. So once again, pretty easy transition for me to kind of come over from the military lifestyle into civilian and help people out with firearms safety.
So some of the ranges in town, you know, they'd rather have the professional shooter, you know, the shooter that's been doing it all their lives. I got a feeling you love taking in the new shooters, the ones that you can train.
We do, yeah. It's, it's great. And once again, it's, it's nice to see people like really get engaged on weapon safety and the basic fundamentals of weaponry, so.
How much fear do you see people coming in that have never done it before? Because that seems to be the general rule.
Right. No, absolutely. We have, we've had a few people come in and kind of get startled and scared. And, you know, we're always professional about it and we, you know, tell them, "Hey, if this is something that you don't want to do, you know, not a big deal." We kind of put them in the back room, let them cool down a little bit, and then we bring them back in and, you know, give it another go.
Get them right back on the horse.
Yeah, I was going to say, like balling off a horse, you got to get back up on it as well.
Exactly, yeah. Right, right.
So you were talking about CCWs.
Yeah.
Have you seen, you seen a big influx?
Absolutely, yeah. We're, our classes are definitely expanding and getting bigger. A lot of people are getting more engaged and more involved and I see word of mouth is, you know, key.
Because they're getting, they're getting afraid. And they're figuring if they don't get it now, they may not get it. Who knows what's coming?
I think you're right. I think that they're reading the news.
I do, too.
I gotta be able, you know, but definitely more people are, I mean, than any year in decades, more people are getting approved. You're seeing people get approved, go through the classes.
Yes, sir. Yeah, absolutely.
Does that surprise you that they're getting approved? Because, you know, in the past, you couldn't get approved if they didn't care what you said or did.
Right. So with my experience with military, it's different. So out of the military, going to civilian lifestyle, I'm, I'm seeing a mixed side of stories. People are complaining, "Yeah, it's harder now." Some are saying it's easier now. So it's, it's kind of a mixed right now.
Interesting, interesting. So website?
Um, for myself?
Yeah, for the...
For Poway Weapons and Gear.
Poway Weapons and Gear.
Right, yeah.
What's your Instagram? I want to follow you on it. No, no, Poway Weapons and Gear. What's their website?
Um, yeah, PWG at range dot com.
I guess we should ask the front lady, huh?
Yeah, there you go.
It's PWGrange.com.
Kind of bend that in just a little bit. There you go. Okay, that, that works. Boss is over here. He's not perfect. Okay, so PW... Okay, very good.
And all the information, yeah, information on our classes is on there. There's videos, photos.
So are you guys for hire? Like if somebody wants you to come to their event and either speak or sponsor or do whatever? Are you, you're an outreach?
Yes, yes.
Awesome. And so what do you think of the gun show? How's it been the last, you were here yesterday and today?
Yesterday and today, it's been great, yeah.
How long you been in guns?
I've been working for the range for about a little over a year.
Okay. Where'd you come from? Was it this industry or...
Um, no, I work in marketing.
So you're bringing, you're bringing a skill set...
Exactly.
That the ranges do definitely need. Because unfortunately, most ranges just have guys in love to shoot, guys and girls, right?
That's right.
But from a marketing point of view, there you go, "Marketing, you know, marketing? Oh, I'll buy some PIMS," right?
Right.
And it doesn't go that well.
Well, you guys do a really great job. Poway Weapons and Gear does a really great job of outreach. I think that a lot of, a lot of folks, you know, we kind of live in a bubble and we, and we think, "Well, gee, we're going to have a product. We're going to set up a range or a shop." And everybody that has a gun is going to come find us. Where I think that we need to be doing more of, and what you guys are doing a very good job of, is finding people and turning them into customers. You know, maybe they're not gun owners yet or have thought about it. You guys do a really good job of holding their hands, getting them into classes, making sure they're comfortable. Your range is beautiful. You know, it's a nice, modern, brand-new range. And I think you guys do a fantastic job of that and I really appreciate it. John has always been a really great partner and I really appreciate it.
Doesn't your range have a uniqueness of, I mean, most ranges are 25 yards?
Right. So we have 25, 50, and 100 yard, all indoor ranges.
And I think you're about the only one in town that does that, correct?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
We're the largest on the West Coast.
Gotcha. And that's really important for people that like something a little bit more, I guess you could say, range.
Right.
Exactly. Yeah, it gives them the option, too, when we do one-on-one instruction. For example, if somebody wanted to come in and have that one-on-one training with an instructor, we can actually go behind the line and do dynamic shooting as well.
Dynamic shooting. Now, what is that? Tell people what, I know what it is, but tell people what...
Dynamic shooting, you know, left and right laterals, moving forward.
Not just standing still and pointing your gun and shoot.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, face movements and stuff like that, moving along the line.
Because you can't tell the bad guy, "Excuse me, could you move a little bit to the left? No, no, more to the right. Stay right there."
Hold still!
Hold still. Will you quit it?
Yeah, yeah. We do two-gun shoots so we can, you know, easily transition from your primary to your secondary, then back with your weapon.
So who's our third guy?
Xander. Let's get Xander on.
Yeah, let him have your cans, as we call it as the industry.
There you go. Xander, now, you've been with Poway Weapons and Gear on and off. I remember you were working there years ago and then you came back and you've, you've been a mainstay with Poway Weapons and Gear.
Oh, yeah. No, I've been there since the beginning in 2014, 15 as a manager. Moved to Vegas for about a little over a year, year and a half. John and I had, John opened up a business there and he let me run it.
I didn't know that. That's why you went to Vegas?
Yep. Well, part of it, partially.
And then you said, "Get me out of this hot city." Oh, my goodness.
Oh, yeah. And then last summer, 2018, he brought me back to, to kind of take control of the membership department.
Ah, so you're in charge of membership. So somebody, so what's the membership department? I thought that was all you San Diego County Gun Owners.
No, it's the membership of their range. It's, it's more of the client service, so the guest experience and the member experience. Anything having to do with whether it's membership or the experience, that falls under the umbrella of the Client Services Department.
And then if you do, and if you do belong to your group, then I'm sure there's tons of benefits that come along with it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Probably best thing to do is go to the website instead of having you sit here and try to recite them, right?
Exactly. And if anyone wants to come on down and try it out, we'd be more than happy to have you, I guess.
Well, what are some of the, you have like intro and advanced classes. What are some of the classes? If somebody, somebody's listening right now and either they know somebody who's brand-new or they are brand-new, what do you recommend they do? How do they, how do they, you know, get started with Poway Weapons and Gear?
You can always come down to the, to the range and we can discuss the different options that we have. We have classes, everything from someone that has never touched a firearm before, all the way up to someone that someone wants to do something a little bit more on the tactical side and a little bit more running gun. And we have classes for that, advanced tactics also.
So do you recommend making an appointment instead of rolling in cold?
Either way. Our range is fairly large, so we have 42 lanes. So we can, you can come any day usually, on the weekends. If you want to use a 100-yard range, I'd definitely suggest making a reservation.
So that brings up a point. Because I had somebody ask me this morning when I was at my other job, "What about black powder? Can they come to your range and shoot black powder or no?"
No, sir.
Okay, I just double-checked. I didn't think you could, but I figure I'd talk to an expert.
Right. The only ammo restrictions we have, nothing that explodes at impact, no tracers, no black powder.
Gotcha, 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 gotcha.
Let's go down there. Dave, you been there? You been to Poway?
Uh, yes, I have.
You and I should go down there and go shoot.
We should do that. I'll take my 22.
There you go.
I got myself a new Ruger 1022. And I haven't fired it yet.
Oh, we'd love to have you.
They went to, you guys were at Gun Prom this year.
Yes.
Big champagne sponsor, front row.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
How was it?
It was amazing. Gets to meet a lot of people in the tree, a lot of supporters. Of course, San Diego County Gun Owners always puts on a great event.
It really is.
And we're just honored to be part of it.
Oh, well, you guys are great sponsors. You guys have always been supportive. Like I said, John, from the very beginning, Poway Weapons and Gear, you know, we've done a bunch of shooting socials there. We want to do a lot more. We used to have our medical professionals come there all the time and learn how to shoot. And that was a lot of fun. And you guys have been fantastic. So I'm glad you guys had a good show here this weekend.
Oh, it's been great. Yes, thank you so much.
All your throats are still working okay? Because I know you've been talking and talking and talking. She's got it down to a science. She does one or two words and that's it.
Oh, yeah, no, they've been great.
All right. What's your website?
PWGrange.com.
All right. Seven days a week?
Seven days a week, open 10 to 10.
All right. Don't even close for holidays, right?
Uh, three holidays.
Except your birthday.
Right.
They do close on your birthday. All right. Well, we can't thank you guys enough for one, supporting, you know, the gun show and coming on our show. We truly appreciate it. You know, we talk about you guys all the time if you really want to know.
No, thank you.
Especially this one. So, you know, we'll do some more things down the road and, you know, keep up the good work. Any last words before I let you roll?
No, thank you so much for having us.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you for your service, too, by the way.
Oh, thank you very much. I'm one of men, so.
Yeah, I know. Thanks for being in the Navy. I mean, I was in the Army, but a probable layoff. See, you don't find too many people in the Navy, you know, for some reason they just didn't want to do that. All right. Well, I think we still got about another minute.
Oh, do we?
I don't know.
All right, cool. Well, so...
Do you have more questions?
Yeah, let's ask some more questions. So is Cheryl working hard, Xander?
Absolutely. She always helps out with all the events, keeps me organized.
She's so obedient.
Julie, the expo that you guys do every year is awesome. And this year was, was no different. It was packed. It's always hot.
Right.
But it's always fun. And who was your, who was your special guest this year?
So we had Jesse James and Marty and Cindy Daniels from...
Whoa, well, we're going to close with that. You can't get any better than that.
It was awesome. If you missed it, you missed it.
Yeah. Well, I bet next year's going to be better.
It'll be awesome.
I got a feeling.
Awesome.
All right, we're going to take a quick break. When we come back, a whole lot more down here at the Gun Show in Delmar. Thanks to San Diego County Gun Owners. Go to san diego county gun owners dot com. Join up. Help us fight the cause. Nobody does it better than San Diego County Gun Owners. This is FM 96.1, AM 1170.
The Answer.
All right, folks. Hey, welcome back. You are listening to Gun Sports Radio right here on FM 96.1, AM 1170.
The Answer.
This segment is brought to you by Convoy Auto Service, 3909 Convoy Street in San Diego, and Bumper Doc Kearney Mesa, both in the same complex. Go down there, scratch the dings and dents. That'd be Bumper Doc, engine tune-ups, oil changes. And by the way, Convoy's got a deal. They'll donate $5 with every oil change to Rady's Children's Hospital. So, man, if you need an oil change, go down there and help out. All right, we have a very special guest. And it would be...
Mike Johnson from SD Must. Mike is the hardest-working Second Amendment guy I've ever met in my life. He's probably my favorite Second Amendment guy because he puts his money where his mouth is. And what I mean by that is he gets out there and he does the real work that needs to get done. And I've been hearing, we've been in the gun show, talking to people about San Diego County Gun Owners all weekend. And I have been hearing from people left and right that there's this guy out there, out in front of the gun show, signing, helping people sign the recall petition. And I said, "Yeah, yeah, I know that guy. He's the hardest-working guy in San Diego County when it comes to Second Amendment issues." So here he is, Mike Johnson. How you doing, man?
Pretty good. How you doing?
So who are you trying to recall?
Gavin Newsom.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
You got my vote.
That's a shame, huh?
How in the world did he even get in there?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to guess on that on air.
But you're going to get, how are you doing as far as people lining up to sign?
People have been, they come in waves. They've been lining up. They kind of walk by. They see the free speech zone and they're like, "Oh, yeah, I'll sign that." And they run over, like pushing people out of the way to try to sign. So it's kind of fun.
Well, then it must prove that your idea was the right idea.
Yeah.
Because I don't know anybody else that's doing it as hard as you are.
So there's actually volunteers all over San Diego right now, yesterday and today that are at different locations.
Are they all part of SD Must?
They're all part of the R A N A F dot org.
Okay.
Aaron Cruz is the one that actually initiated this recall effort.
Right.
But there's, it's all volunteers as far as I know, but there's different groups online that they're kind of trying to coordinate it.
So let's say we get him out. What goes in in his place? Is it a good thing or a bad thing?
Well, I was kind of hoping that if, I mean, from my point of view, if we can get enough signatures for recall, at least that sends, at the very least, it sends a message that there's, you know, at least one and a half, two million people that aren't happy with what he's doing.
Right.
And it's not just gun owners. Actually, a lot of people that have volunteered are, you know, people that worry about their kids' healthcare, people that are independent contractors, people that are, you know, getting forced out left and right by all these laws.
Car enthusiasts?
Yeah, diesel truck drivers.
Oh, my.
Truckers, you know. A lot of people are being affected by these laws he's signing and...
Does he read them or is he just sign them? Because I don't think he's reading them.
I don't know. It feels like the, the party says, "Hey, sign, pass these," and they just do it.
Yeah.
I mean, the governor's supposed to be the check and balance against the out-of-control legislature.
Yeah.
And, you know, he's not controlling anything.
No, he's a rubber stamp, it seems to me like.
That's what it feels like.
Yeah, it does, it does.
Especially on these gun laws.
Yeah, especially on gun laws.
I mean, he's a true believer. No one's telling him to, you know, what to do.
No, he's going out of his way to do it. And the funny thing is, is a lot of the support that I've been getting from people, it's not, it's nonpartisan. They're all different parties or independents. They're all just like, hey, all of a sudden, they're just not, you know, they should have not been happy with what he was doing before he got in office. Now they're even more upset about it.
So it sounds to me like he thinks, he thinks that this is the path to the White House. He thinks that this is the right thing to do to get to where he wants to go.
That's what it seems like.
Yeah.
Because he's been on a trajectory since San Francisco.
But he's not listening to his constituents. He's not listening to the people.
The biggest thing is, is, you know, with the governor and any of the legislators, you don't just represent the people that voted for you.
No.
You represent everybody.
The ones that didn't.
And you can't tell me that they're not getting letters and phone calls, you know, opposing all this stuff that he's signing.
He has to.
You know, or he's just ignoring them. And because, I mean, especially here in San Diego, I've talked to hundreds, if not thousands, of people that, I mean, first of all, they didn't vote for him, but still, like, they have issues. They, they send a message to his office and they just get some generic letter back.